Are you ready? Are you ready?
Yeah.
All right, thank you to everybody. Good evening. This is November thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Welcome, everybody, here in the audience and there on YouTube land. Okay, if you could all please join me, even you at home, with the, uh, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America as one nation, united in heaven, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. First order of business, we have bids that have to be open, and Barb is starting that. We have from Delaware Engineering in our audience, Mr. Alan Taverner. Did I say it right, sir?
Yes, you did.
Thought so. And this is for our, uh, for the, uh, works at the wastewater treatment, uh, sewer plant wastewater treatment plant. So, how many do we have, Barb?
There are ten.
Ten? More than typical. I've got water, just a bigger pardon. I'm mixing up wastewater. We have another one going on, Charlie.
You want me to tell everybody what? What would? Yeah. Well, this is just, this is a public bid opening. Back in two thousand one, eleven, I think it was, no, two thousand twenty, the water, you may remember, the water main broke under the thruway, and Shawa Park was out of water for a week. And so eventually, we got that replaced with a big line underneath it, a nice eighty's line under it. This is using some of the, uh, unextended, uh, recovery of the ARPA funds from COVID to try to replace the section and realign it on the west, on the east side of the thruway and get it out from under the trailer of the mobile home park. It goes under the smaller mobile home park. So it's going to get it out from under there, get it through the way to the valve and put it out there. And there's a bid offering to go from the opposite side of the two-way thruway to Shawa Park. And that'll eliminate all of these very extreme locations.
And as I've explained to people in the town multiple times, um, you know, the hundred year old pipe that was underneath the thruway has been replaced, as Alan has indicated, in twenty twenty. This is for the extensions of that, of that pipe that go from roughly nine W from the town of Cooksack into, uh, to the thruway where the pipe's been replaced. And of course, beyond that, into the district, those are two separate areas that have to be fixed. We have, at this moment, two hundred and ninety-two dollars, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars of ARPA money. Two hundred and ninety-two is not going to get us too far. And, um, of course, there's other funding available to supplement, um, that part, but that's going to be the biggest, um, chunk of it. So, we're going to start, and I have no idea if any of the gentlemen in the back are with any of these outfits, but this is with American Evergreen. Anyone want to hear from Evergreen?
Yep. They were free bid meeting, they're good people to work with.
They're good people to work with. And I'm looking for the, um, I think the most pertinent thing is the bottom line dollar. And, um, we have, uh, the base bid is three hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred, and the alternate bid is one hundred and sixty-four, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. One sixty-four, one sixty. That's Evergreen. Oh, excuse me, American Evergreen. Here, will you put these back in, let me see. The next one is from an outfit called... Is there a question? Is there something?
No, no. Nope, we're good.
This one is from Angel, from Latham, New York. Bid totals. We have the base bid at five forty-nine, four hundred, and the alternate at three oh two, seven hundred. This is Bev or B E V Drilling. My fingers are worse. Hmm, they must have it hidden in the back. There we go. Base bid, two seventy-two, six thirty-eight. Bid alternate is one forty-nine, three fifty-two. Bellamy, in Scotia, New York. Two hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and five. Or is that eight oh five?
Oh, if you're asking, I don't know. Two four six.
Two four six, eight oh five.
Eight oh five, beg your pardon. And the alternate bid is, uh, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-five. I believe Bellamy worked on that project back in twenty twenty. Anyone hear from Bellamy? This one is an outfit called Birdsol. They're out of Coxville, New York. Two hundred and fifty-five for the, um, base bid, two fifty-five, six forty, and the alternate is one hundred and seventy-one, oh seven zero. Diversified Wireless Incorporated. And this is from Herkimer. There's the bond and everything, thank you. Very nice. We have a dollar figure on the base bid of four hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and seventy, and on their alternate is one thirty-three, five twenty-seven. And we're, now we're talking about William J. Kelleher and Sons. Motorized and everything. I'm not finding the bid sheet. Did I go by it? I don't think so. Oh. Thank you. I can read this one. For the base bid, it is four hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars, and on the bid alternate is one ninety-seven, three thirty-nine. Peter Luizzi and Brothers, out of Waterbury. Base bid, four oh four, four, uh, excuse me, four oh four, nine hundred, and a bid alternate is a hundred and sixty-four, five eighteen. You know, it's good for change to have somebody qualified, particularly groups, um, interested in working here in New Baltimore. It's, uh, you know, it's pleasant, uh, change from previous experiences. And this one's from Merritt Construction, uh, out of Socrates. Yeah, it's four hundred and eighty-six thousand is the base, four hundred and eighty-six, three fifty-two, and the bid alternate is two hundred and sixty, one eight six. Thank you. And the last, but not least.
Jeff, that's two hundred and sixty thousand, one eighty-six.
If you could pull that up. I think so.
Two hundred and sixty, one eighty-five.
And this one is from Robinson, R. R. B. Robinson, out of Candor, New York. Candor, New York. Very upfront. Okay. Very forthright, I would suggest. Okay, uh, the base bid is three sixty-two, seven hundred, and the bid alternate is a hundred and forty-seven, five fifty. And that represents the last of the group. Uh, Mr. Taverner, is there something you'd like to say? Are all these outfits, uh, qualified? I mean, that's the first question that must be asserted.
Yes, they are. There's even another one who showed up, which is also qualified, that didn't end up bidding, uh, local fellow, Mr. Holstead, you know? So, I expected to get it in for him, so, but then it's great.
It's too bad, Kueh. I mean, I would love to have Holstead. Yeah, we'd love to have him here, but, uh, gentlemen, which groups are you with?
We're three different contractors.
I expect it so.
Birdsol, B E V Drilling.
Well, perhaps we'll be dealing with one or the other of you. I can't say which.
These guys are right there.
All right.
Unless the numbers don't add up on the totals and whatever, or something like that, then it looks like Bellamy would be the, uh, little bidder.
All right, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'm gonna take, I'm, I'll take these and make copies and mail them back to you guys, uh, on Monday or tomorrow. Is that okay?
That would be good. We have to decide on who, though.
Well...
Don't have to, I mean, no.
Okay, if you want to try and decide tonight, let me go through the little bidder.
Do your work.
And we'll...
Do what you're paid for. Thank you.
What is the difference between the bid and the alternate?
For, um, the, actually, Mr. Taverner, did you hear that question?
What was that?
What's the difference between the base and the alternate?
The base was the side, the eastern side, getting up to the thruway, and the alternate is from the thruway up to the Shawa Park thru.
Right. In essence, we broke it out, so that one could bid on one part, and the other could bid on the other part. Okay? And, uh...
We were a little bit, I was a little bit worried about how high some of the numbers would come in, you know? So that's...
With good reason.
We got good numbers, though.
Yeah? All right, thank you very much. And, uh, Mr. Taverner, uh, thank you for being here.
I'm just gonna stick around for a minute and add up Bellamy and give you, give you a recommendation.
Okay, very good. All right, so let me move on. Uh, we have approval of the minutes for the October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four meeting. They have been presented to each of you. Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to, um, to approve those minutes. Motion made in second. Any discussion? Of those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so let's start with our cards. We're our public comment period. So, we're gonna start with Ms. Ellie Alfow, Alfow. And I want to make a field, and I think...
You had a hard time pronouncing anything.
That's wastewater.
Reason for my speaking to the board is a number of things. And I even wrote them down, so I wouldn't forget them. First thing I'd like to do is to, uh, thank the Green County legislators. They put on a beautiful program down in Catskill. I don't know if you saw it in the News Herald, but it was unbelievable. There were every legislator that you could think of there. There were, and I think almost every, um, uh, what do you call it? Service people there. There was a little ship there, all for this acknowledging this man that was named the Veteran of the Year. The next thing I'd like to discuss with you is, uh, I don't know that, in fact, any of you have been on the board as long as what I'm going to tell you now, and that is, this is the fifteenth anniversary of the luncheons down in the Hamlet that we started when Dave Lewis was, uh, supervisor. And it was to get the seniors in New Baltimore, an area where they could meet and get some kind of, um, grouping together, get them out of their houses, like we've done now for the big thing and for the Christmas party. We had a hundred and forty people at that luncheon today. That's a, that's a lot of people. And it went really well. It, the meal was terrific. Now, I just learned it's on today's agenda about the seniors. I've been asked about that by a number of people, so now I can give them a little more information than we had before. Uh, let's see. Could you, could you tell me, please? I asked in the beginning of the meeting, Jeff, approximately how much is in the budget for seniors? I believe it, we came to the conclusion it's about seventeen hundred.
Yeah, there's somebody right there.
It's eighteen hundred.
It's eighteen, okay, yeah.
Okay.
I knew it was in that.
Well, the only thing I want to point out to you is, when, um, this first went to the budget line, it was for a thousand dollars. In fifteen years, we've only gotten up to eighteen hundred. I just want to impress upon you that we still have seniors, and they're dying by limits and bounds, that really need to associate with other people. So, in fact, we can even find their needs. We have a couple of people that, um, excuse me, that are medically, physically in peril, and they don't have the neighborhood association that we used to have. And if there's any way to improve on that, I'd really like to see it with the help of the board. Thank you.
Okay. So, let's go to Mr. Badney, Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, and Train. Sounds are good. Accretive grouping.
I'd like to comment on Ms. Alfow's, uh, remarks on seniors. Hundred and forty appeared for luncheon, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
I wonder if we could work harder to get a portion of that one hundred and forty seniors to appear at some of these public meetings.
Well, if you can provide them the transportation, which is, in the evening, driving is not what they really need. It's, how do you get somewhere?
I mean, there should be more, should be dialogue, not between the audience.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. If anyone goes off the beaten path once in a while...
That's my fault. I, I voted for something fair.
We agree.
It would be interesting, and that might be something we could look into, is getting them here in transportation. After all, they are citizens who reside in ancient quarters, what's going on here? This, uh, training issue. The issue I'm addressing here is the town board's failure of fiscal responsibility and trust, specifically the unwarranted passing of Town Resolution Seventeen of one seven, one seven of two thousand and four on September the ninth, unanimously approving payment of registration fees and hotel for town board member Deborah Sodolano to attend a planning and zoning board training course in East Syracuse on September twenty-third. The cost in New Baltimore taxpayers was at least two hundred and fifteen dollars for this, uh, training. We cannot overlook the costs and must factor that, the other costs, and must factor them into, uh, uh, this, uh, waste, uh, such as fuel, time, and per diem for Sodolano's trip, bringing the total to approximately three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Very, very conservative, conservative estimate. The course was held on Monday and September twenty-third, the date of Town of New Baltimore Work Meeting, but to her credit, which Sodolano made the trip back to New Baltimore to be present in that, present at that meeting. Whether she was fully awake at that time is, uh, still out, still an outstanding question. The official minutes of September ninth, two thousand and four are inaccurate and misleading. Councilmember Downs, uh, uh, stated, "Okay, so we're going to send a chairperson to this." Sodolano is not a chairperson. She's only a liaison committee member, with board member Cash acting as liaison to the ZBA. She is nothing more than an observer. Sodolano is not a, a, a planning board member or on the planning board, uh, committee. Downs further stated, "Wouldn't it be, have been a better use to send the people on the P, uh, planning board and the ZBA to this? We're supposed to oversee, but we're not supposed to be involved in the decisions." Very good observation, Ms. Downs. You're quite correct. Uh, the planning board and the zoning board should have been able to send people to this particular event. Supervisor Russo's response, however, is uninformed but not surprising. Russo states, "This..."
Russo, please.
"This one's in Syracuse, so this is the closest one, unfortunately." No, Mr. Russo, the closest one is in the Town of New Baltimore, accessible to anyone from the comfort of home or anywhere with internet connection. The training is available, not only online, but free. It's offered by the Department of State, Division of Local Government Services, and several recent courses and presentations available, free, on YouTube. Okay, that'll finish up on that.
Thank you. Now, uh, we're going to topic number two, I expect, and that's called Highway Department Safety and Maintenance Issues.
This is a, this is a perennial issue. Who's not seen the pothole that never seems to stay filled? The Highway Department keeps filling it with cold patch, but a couple of weeks later, maybe even days later, the pothole, unmiraculously, reappears, as does the Highway Department, to fill it in with more cold patch. In the end, there's more cold patch coating the underside of residents' vehicles than there is in the pothole. But the Highway Department seems obsessed with repeating the same failures again and again, but experiencing different, expecting to experience different results. We all know that this might be the definition of stupidity or insanity. Well, since night, uh, two thousand and sixteen, Mr. Russo, Mr. Delisanti, as well as Highway Superintendent Allen and his brother Deputy, Scott Van Warmer, in the Baltimore Highway Department, um, have been advised of these deficiencies in the Hamlet, uh, for the past some eight years. I recently witnessed the inevitable result of doing things halfway, when two weeks ago, a vehicle attempting to back into a parking area ended up with its front wheels stuck in a deep drainage ditch that was hidden by unclear vegetation, impossible to see the ditch, much less the incredible gap. In a statement provided by Highway Superintendent Allen Van Warmer in response to my foiled demand about, uh, January twenty-seventh, two thousand, uh, twenty-three, Van Warmer states, "posts with reflectors can be installed along the edge of the ditch on the opposite side of the retaining wall," which is also a controversial issue, "if there are concerns about running into it." Well, a year ago, more than a year ago, there were concerns about running into it. The posts and reflectors were never installed, but on November first, two thousand and twenty-four, Van Warmer responds after a vehicular incident involving the ditch, "the weeds in the ditch, uh, line have been cut and removed, and a small sign will be installed stating that there was an open ditch there, and that is far, and that is as far as it will go." To date, there is no small sign, only a deep ditch, but now it's filled with leaves, and that is as far as it has gone. Uh, I'll conclude this one with, uh, saying that the spending goes on and on, but is anyone on the board exercising their rights and responsibilities under the law to actually scrutinize and audit vouchers, uh, being rubber-stamp approved? There's apparently no monitoring of the operations of the Highway Department, even though Supervisor Russo and Councilmember Downs are on the Highway Liaison Committee. Private property has suffered irreparable damage due to town negligence. All other private property is being protected using town resources. But we go on to, uh, state, make some statements about Highway Law, uh, Section two eighty-four, but, uh, one of my next issues is foil responses.
This is topic number three, sir.
Well, here we are, foil responses.
It is number three. Right? I just want to make sure I got the right card. Topic three?
Foil responses.
It doesn't say that, but it says unreasonable delay, record access. I guess that, that's the same thing. Carry on.
Yeah, that's foil response. That's why. Federal law and state laws enshrined in the principle that's known as the Freedom of Information Statutes. New York State Public Officer, uh, law clarifies public's right to obtain records from public agencies. The two most important New York laws in this regard are Open Meetings Law and the Freedom of Information Law. The law provides that within five, uh, business days, if received a written request for record reasonably described, the town must make the record available, deny the request in writing, or provide an approximate date, which shall be reasonable when the request will be granted or denied. The law further provides that if circumstances prevent disclosure within twenty business days, the agency itself state in writing the reason for the inability to grant access, and the date certain, a date certain, within a reasonable period when the access, uh, request will be granted. There are exceptions, approximately nine of them, uh, by which a, a record may be denied. Uh, to my knowledge, there is no exception for unforeseen retirement of an employee. My question would be, does the entire town close down when a single employee retires? On October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, I contacted the town clerk regarding the outstanding foils. I received a response from the clerk on October thirtieth stating my, uh, stating my intention to a letter, uh, calling my attention to a letter attachment. I responded immediately on December, uh, that the date of December third, the production of foils, that date back to August and September, was totally unreasonable and unacceptable and constituted a constructive denial of my requests. The problem here is that to cast a blind eye on such constructive denial would lead the unten, to the untenable result of incentivized and unreasonable delays in responding to foil requests. Some of the information demanded in those foil requests decays over time, and the issues become more, um, in other words, the information and all the production, and all the efforts to get, to get that disclosure comes to nothing.
I agree.
One of the reasons why I don't have total, uh, the entire, uh, set of information I needed for this evening's presentations. Number four.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I think I might have something to provide in response to both, uh, number three, but it looks like it relates to number four as well, so I'll withhold it till you're done.
One is, one is Article Six, which is the Freedom of Information, and this is Article Seven, which is the Open Meetings Law.
I, I understand that.
Oh, okay, okay. I just don't want to confuse the foil with two different issues. On November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, I was researching operations of the Town of New Baltimore Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals, and my searches included the two thousand and twenty-four agendas and minutes of the respective meetings, public meetings. Since both, uh, the Planning Board and ZBA are public bodies according to Public Officers' Law, Article Seven, Sections one hundred, two hundred and eleven, and as public bodies, they're required to keep minutes of any meeting of the form of members. And since there are agendas, which by the way are not required by law, uh, but published, I could find no minutes, uh, which are required by law. So, on November twelfth, I contacted the clerk's office with a question... So on November twelfth, I contacted the clerk's office with a question of where are the minutes located? Where are they located for the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals? I did not receive the response by November thirteenth, so I contacted the clerk's office again on November thirteenth, requesting the location of the minutes by closing business, since I was preparing my comments for tonight. The Open Meetings Law defines a public body as an entity required to conduct public business by means of a form and one that performs governmental functions and carries out their duties collectively. The ZBA and the Planning Board are therefore public bodies. But here, the issue is not of agendas or definitions of public bodies. It's Section one oh six of the OML, which deals specifically with minutes and states that minutes shall be taken at all public meetings of the public body. And the law states that minutes shall be available within two weeks of the date of such meetings. And even if they are not finalized, they must be published, even if labeled with draft. I also requested, and the clerk complied with my request by forwarding my emails to the chairs of the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Robert Van Etten, and I don't know who the other person was, it's not listed in the directory. But Mr. Van Etten receives two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars to serve as chairman on the Planning Board. And his deputy chair receives nine hundred and fourteen dollars. It would seem reasonable that one of them could respond to a residency inquiry, but this is at least the second or third time that neither have responded. I don't think I'm expecting too much. I don't think I'm expecting too much to have them answer a simple email inquiry as to, for instance, was anyone recommended to attend the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals training? Or where are your minutes? I'll finish here. It seems that these salaries are indeed poorly allocated and may need some review. I'm done.
So I'm going to give you a bit of information for the general public and very much related to your topics here. Where are the minutes? They don't exist. Clearly, as you've well pointed out, is a violation of the Open Meetings Law, open records. And the paradox with topic three, as you... Because some of your foil requests have to do with minutes. We are supposed to present and provide documents that exist. We don't provide documents that don't exist. However, we have documents that should exist.
I think that's called word salad.
You can call it what you will, but it's the absolute truth. I know on a monthly basis, this town board is presented with documents from our planning board, from our zoning board, which we read aloud at our work meetings. And it was... You know, I'm trying to find a way to put this in a fashion. The minutes have not been prepared. I mean, Ms. Downs, I mean, is there some things if you would like to... You know, they've been taped, and we've got hundreds and some odd tapes.
Oh, we've got more than that.
Oh, yes, maybe hundreds that are not labeled. We have no idea the date. When they start the meeting, in contrast to us, when they start the meeting, they don't say this is November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We don't know when they were valid for. They are behind as much as five years. The minutes have not been done sporadic. There's a couple that exist here and yon.
There's one for February eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
My point exactly. So that's why I say that these relate. You're asking for something that doesn't exist, and they are a violation of Open Meetings Law. Absolutely. We've even got to the point where we've sent these out to transcribing companies. And they're fine, except they don't know the name, because they don't even mention and ask people to tell the name of the speaker. So when they put together the minutes, whose name do they attach to this? And of course, board members speak up, and we don't do that here. We don't say, hi, this is Jeff Russo, and the tape will know who we are. Although people will know who we are sometimes. And so that's a major struggle, and I'm not going to kid you, that putting together five years of tapes that don't even have a label. It's a shameful event. And I've never heard anything like it.
I would probably concur with you. That is a shameful event, but the law requires that Planning Board members, Zoning Board of Appeals members receive regular annual training. I think it's four hours currently on an hourly basis. That training includes public meetings, public hearings, requirements of the OML, Freedom of Information. I have here a list, five pages of courses and available resources on the internet by the Division of Local Government Services of the Department of State of New York. Now, my question is this: if the law requires your people to receive training, and if you're complying with the law and ensure that these people receive training, and Mr. Van Etten and the other chairperson of the zoning boards of the Board of Appeals, Mr. Van Etten of the Planning Board, is aware of these problems, then they are complicit in the violation of the Open Meetings Law. And my question would be, and is a very valid question, is how in hell did this get escape attention for, as you say, five freaking years?
It's a five years, yeah. It's sporadic, as I said.
This is absolutely, absolutely egregious, scandalous, and totally unacceptable. According to your planning board, you have liaison people here from this town board, Ms. Cash and Ms. Sotolano on the ZBA. I think Ms. Downs and Ms. Cash on the Planning Board. What in hell is going on here?
We are merely in the beginning.
What are your liaison people doing? What are your board chairs doing, for God's sake?
We are in the process.
Don't gavel me. This is an incredibly bad situation.
Stop yelling, if you wouldn't mind. Nevertheless, we are in the process of fixing things. We have been utilizing the services of our town attorney and to how to proceed forward. There is one point I'll find that could be of benefit with your list of training. And that would be, I would like to have some focus training as it relates to some of these records and all that stuff. And not just every planning topic that might exist, but those that are pertinent to this void.
It's trained by the Tuck Hill Commission on Open Meetings and OML. Do you know what the Tuck Hill Commission is about?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Just checking. I don't want to be throwing things out there and not have people understand what I'm talking about. Including comprehensive planning, which is a role of some of the planning board's roles. These are all available. I don't understand why people don't pay attention to them. Okay, can we proceed to the next topic? I think I've got enough ammunition on that one already.
Well, you've gotten admission from me. That's a clap.
Yes, thank you. No, I appreciate it.
I'm providing candor here.
I appreciate you coming forward with that information and that admission. Take some cojones.
But it's not even just on an admission, Jeff. I've been in here probably forty, forty to sixty hours in the last two months when it came up. And we've been doing everything we possibly can to get those minutes. Nobody ever thought, every month, we'd get a report. They just didn't say that there was no minutes, because the report we get, we assumed it was need minutes.
Yeah, the report speaks of a lot line adjustment or subdivision, et cetera, et cetera.
I appreciate that. And you have people on the Planning Board that have been on there for years and years and years. What I don't understand is when you're paying, say, Mr. Van Etten, over two thousand dollars to be the chair of that board, isn't it part of his purview to ensure that the law, that the board is complying with the law? I mean, if they overlook this...
You were going to ask me to say something specific about a specific individual, and I really don't want to do that.
No, 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 no.
We have had, just to point out to you, there has been conversations.
We're not making this at home, you know, we're not...
Yeah, we can't carry on. We can't carry on. But I will say that there have been conversations about this very topic in executive session as it relates to personnel things that I cannot and shall not disclose. To suggest there's nothing happening is wrong. To suggest it's everything you want, I'm not going to say it's that either, okay? So that's all I want to say. So topic five, if you would, please.
I've already commented on the irresponsible approval of this board, town board members, Sotolano's attendance at a planning board, at a planning and zoning board training event. In East Syracuse, that costs taxpayers at least two hundred and fifteen dollars. I think that the town board needs to put the service back in public servant and demonstrate some commitment to accountability. Now, isn't that interesting? One thought would be for Ms. Sotolano to reimburse the town any monies received to attend the training that was absolutely local and free, locally available and free. Ms. Sotolano would not be disadvantaged by doing so, since she is receiving at least seventy thousand per year state income tax-free and state pension. In fact, she could waive the five thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollar salary of town board members and not feel a thing. Ms. Cash could do the same and waive her five thousand two hundred and fifty-three stipends in stipends, and she receives more than fifty-two thousand dollars per year in state income tax-free.
Yeah, I don't know if I want to get into any individuals' finances.
This is all publicly available information. This is very illustrative of what's going on in the town.
I mean, I get a social security check every month. I mean, come on.
Do you pay income tax on that?
That's none of your business.
Damn right I do.
I'm not interested in what you're paying.
So, I mean, I don't want to get into who earns what. I've got that there.
Well, let's put it this way. If Mr. Delasanti, who draws ninety-four thousand in state income and state income tax-free pension, were to waive his almost three thousand dollars as your appointed deputy supervisor, that would... Those amounts would put sixteen grand back into the state, into the town treasury. What's even more troubling is that the town board is approved for itself and some selected elected officials a three percent pay raise, pay increase, adding an additional five thousand dollars to the budget. I doubt that means we get three percent additional efficiency. This, the average per capita income in New Baltimore is thirty-three thousand dollars per year, and we have a six percent poverty rate.
All right. Is that your topic five, sir?
That's not, but I deleted a lot of stuff here. I'm sure you don't want to hear some of the other things, such as the fact that per meeting, town board members are receiving at present two hundred and nineteen dollars for each meeting that they attend in this town of New Baltimore. With the three percent increase that you've given yourselves, you will be receiving two hundred and twenty-five dollars per meeting. Now, I'm wondering if the town of New Baltimore is actually getting their money's worth on this.
All right, thank you, sir.
I'm done.
All right, let's move on. Okay, new business, resolution to adopt the twenty-twenty-five budget. Okay, resolution number one forty-four of twenty-twenty-four, resolution to adopt twenty-twenty-five budget. Be it resolved that following a public hearing held on October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four regarding the twenty-twenty-five preliminary budget, the town board hereby adopts the twenty-twenty-five preliminary budget as the twenty-twenty-five final budget. I'll make that motion. Motion made, seconded. Discussion, please. Hearing now, and all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Okay, the next one is resolution number one forty-five. Okay. Resolution number one forty-five, it's where I left off, resolution to accept proposal for senior luncheon. Whereas two proposals were procured for a senior luncheon to be held on Wednesday, December fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Resolved, the town board of the town of Baltimore hereby accepts the proposal from Peggy's Restaurant for two, twenty-four dollars per person. I'll make that motion.
A second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution four four six. Resolution to forward delinquent water and sewer accounts to Green County Real Property Tax Service for re-levee on the twenty-twenty-five budget. This is every year. And whereas the town of Baltimore has ten delinquent water district accounts in the amount of six thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-one cents, whereas the town of Baltimore has one water district three account for a hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-six cents. And whereas the town of Baltimore has forty-four delinquent sewer accounts in the amount of twenty-seven thousand one hundred and two dollars and four cents. Therefore, be it resolved that any and all unpaid water and sewer amounts for the year twenty-twenty-four will be sent to Green County Real Property Tax Services for re-levee on the twenty-twenty-five property taxes. So I'll make the motion.
A second.
Motion made and seconded. In terms of discussion, for everyone who doesn't know, this is, you didn't pay your water bill, it's going automatically onto your tax bill in January. Okay, that's what happens. So, motion made and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Okay. So then we have on resolution one forty-seven, resolution to authorize supervisors to pay ordered claims. Whereas the town clerk has presented claims to the town board for order and review. And whereas the town board has ordered claims twenty-twenty-four eleven dash oh one to twenty-twenty-four eleven dash five six, it is resolved that the supervisor should be authorized to pay claims twenty-twenty-four dash eleven dash oh one to twenty-twenty-four dash eleven dash five six. Be it further resolved, the town clerk will prepare an abstract and hold it for public review until December thirty-one of twenty-twenty-four. I'll make the motion. Motion made, motion seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
General, seventy thousand seventy-two dollars twenty-six cents. Highway, sixty-eight thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars twenty-six cents. Sewer one, four thousand six hundred sixty dollars sixty-eight cents. Sewer two, forty-two dollars thirty-six cents. Water two, seven hundred nineteen dollars forty-nine cents. Street lighting one, one thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars four cents. Street lighting two, three hundred twelve dollars ninety-seven cents. Total, one hundred forty-six thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars six cents.
Thank you. Here's a reminder for the Hamlet laws. Leave pickup Mondays, November eighteen, twenty-twenty-five. Bag leaves curbside by seven thirty a.m. Bag or loose leaves can be brought to the highway garage during normal business, Monday through Thursday, six a.m. to three thirty p.m., Friday, six a.m. to ten a.m.
Can we make an announcement about tomorrow night as well?
Yeah, it's next. Okay, we'll get there. See, I'm not the only one. Okay, so the leaves are Monday, November eighteen, and November twenty-fifth. Okay. And can the leaves be brought to the highway garage for everybody else? That's what I'm asking.
As long as they follow the procedure of bringing them up there. It can't be, you know, just red.
Okay, upcoming meetings, November fourteenth, that's tomorrow. Public information meeting at Route one forty- Public Information Meeting at Route one forty-four, Route one forty-four Complete Streets Project. M J Engineering coming in at six P M at Cornell Hook and Ladder Fire Company on Gil Road. On November twenty-five, public meeting on community choice aggregation at six thirty. November twenty-five, town board work meeting at seven P M. November twenty-eight, town offices closed for Thanksgiving Day. November twenty-nine, floating holiday is observed by some staff. Actually, I would say most staff. Is that fair enough to say?
I guess.
Some body would like to use the floating holiday after Thanksgiving.
But there's a, sorry, there's a planning board meeting tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
It's not on here.
Oh, my. Yeah, we have a planning board meeting and the public information meeting on the same day.
Planning board is at seven here tomorrow night. Right.
Correct, though. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, so now we have, um, we've already done order of claims, so there's nothing more there. So I'll entertain a motion.
Can I ask a question first, Michelle? Um, I have a resident who sends me emails, requests that I send them to other people, requests that I acknowledge receipt. Am I obligated to do that?
No, thank you.
No. Thank you.
All right.
I think the email can be sent directly to the individual.
Uh huh. And there's another, there's another part of that when we have a permanent clerk, that things can be changed, but I'm not required to acknowledge, send, re-acknowledge.
No, I mean, obviously it depends on what the correspondence is. If it's a foil, there's an acknowledgement requirement or something like that, but just a, just a correspondence.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that, oh, hold on, please. No, sir, you have your chance. You have your chance. I have an announcement.
You didn't mention the name, but you know damn well it's me.
All right, please stop. Okay. I do want to have an announcement. This is, I see there's no one present who is in the Hamlet, with the exception of Mr. Batty. Uh, but there is something that is already underway. And that is a complete audit of the existing point systems in the sewer district. Uh, the point system is the basis of the bills for everybody who's in the sewer district. And, um, as a brief, a, a typical home has a value of ten points. A two-family home has twenty points. And there are very, uh, various things, such as commercial property like the boathouse, which I believe has over eighty points, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, I don't remember the numbers. Nevertheless, the costs are prepared in our budget. They're in here. The costs are then divided by the total number of points in an aggregate for the entire sewer district. And then you have a total cost per point and you upload it based upon the points in that particular parcel. Multiplied by twenty, ten, whichever the case by p. Well, there are changes in the district down there. Some have not been well-known to, uh, or, or identified and some have been well-hidden. But there are some homes who are, who were two-family and now they're one-family, they get a deduction. There are some properties that, there's one particular house that doesn't exist anymore. They're not getting charged, I think it's five points for a vacant lot and ten points for a house. Some, uh, and, uh, so obviously that has to be changed on behalf of that parcel owner. There are homes that have two-family homes now. They're two-family homes. And, um, they have to be doubled, unless since they go from ten points to twenty. So we're doing a complete audit. There are reasons, ways about which we will discover this. We have some people in our code enforcement officer and our assessors office who are going to be helpful on that. And that is to, one of it is to drive around town, look for two separate entrances and look for two separate meters. That tells you if you got two separate, of course, it doesn't tell you everything. Okay? The problem is some places haven't had permits. They just didn't. Okay? Didn't fill out a permit. And the second part is the linkage between the existing permits that gave a new apartment, for lack of another story, were never presented to the sewer department. Which, I guess I'm the sewer department. Well, me and Lou, well, no, you guys too, you know. And nevertheless, uh, but in time's gone by. So we got a lot of changes in our sewer district, but basically what we're going to do is recalculate all the points, come up with a base point, a cost per point, and that's what the basis of the bills are. I can't tell you at this point with the changes, because they're both sides of the coin, whether your bills are going to be changed by much at all. They might be rather similar and I don't know.
Identification on the cars for these people so that when they go on somebody's property to look or do whatever, they're identified as, you know, like Central Hudson does or anybody else.
We're going to do all that. Anyway, much of the audit's going to be financial audit. It's not going to be, you know, door-to-door thing. Okay, so I just wanted to let people know and for our audience out there that, um, you know, coming soon, uh, but this is not, um, the first bill doesn't go out until after the first of the year. Nevertheless, we're not doing it for twenty twenty-four, but for twenty twenty-five, we want it to be as correct as possible. And, uh, so that's coming up. And I think I've told everybody everything. Anyway, that's all I have.
Okay, now that you've made your, now that you've made your announcements, we have, uh, yes, a public comment.
No, the public comment period's over, sir. I've already moved on.
Uh, you have a second one here.
I've already done all of the claims. So I entertain a motion to adjourn. Did I hear what I read?
I'll second adjourn.
You want to abort this contract, right?
Is this part of the meeting?
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Not tonight?
No, not tonight.
Well, I can recommend that you abort it if you want. We don't have to decide about the bid alternate. You've got forty-five days to do that, so, um, we can, you can do it at your next meeting. That's fine.
Yeah, we'll do it then.
I will, then I will send you a letter evaluating all the results and I will get that to you here this week and and all these numbers add up and I've worked with them before, so I think we've got it.
Yeah, we have to. All right. I thought I heard a motion to adjourn.
We did.
Did I hear a second?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, everybody. Good night. You don't have a say.
I had a say and I'm going to give you a say right now.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Russo. Are you aware when you challenge as to the training, those people give training in-house by, and that is acceptable to the state?
I have an $1,800 budget for training. That's the first one. So we spent $280.
But when I'm telling them, the guys watch the, uh, instructions on the TV to get trained so they don't have to go out of town.
I understand.
Oops, I missed it.
Come on, you got to get in there. Got trouble with the.
You know what, the whip is involved with this fifty-two hundred a year for that thing. You ever paid the grant?
I'll be in the block.
See, 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 see.
That is so cool.
That's my sister's significant other.
Really?
A hundred and three years old.
Wow.
And that's the vote that they sent for the ceremony.
That's so nice.
Yeah, her partner.
Is he the one?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
I did read a great article about.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he's famous.
Very cool.
Anyway.
Very nice.
He tried.
Okay, fine.
I mean.
I mean, I did everything I could, guys.
No.
Okay, so we're going to get scolded tonight. I ain't going. I'm going to go.
First of all, as they said, on the number four on the back, we were all instructed, but they didn't like what we saw. And it was printed out there and we've been receiving it for what, five years now? And this man, he has nothing. This is terrible.
You need to be careful. I don't know if that, you can, you can work forty years for that.
No, I didn't. My pension might not be much, but you know.
I'm going to look yours up. I'm going to announce yours now.
Hey, that's fine with me and you can even add to it. I got an $800 pension. You want to talk it down? Let me take it for years.